Yeah, you're right.
Okay, Mayor.
Thanks, Jim, and good evening, everybody. Here we go on Zoom again. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided through the posting, mailing, and filing of the annual notice of regularly scheduled meetings for the Town Council on December 8, 2021. The notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, provided to the Westfield leader in the Star Ledger, and filed with the clerk of the town of Westfield. This is Rowley, and I have a roll call.
Mayor Brindl?
Here.
Councilmembers Hapgood?
Here.
Harmley?
Here.
McGrippo?
Here.
Katz?
Here.
Mackey? Contract?
Here.
Dardia?
Here.
Voice?
Here.
Please rise for this, so as a little to the flag wherever you may have or see one. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. So Jim, I'll hand it over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick updates for everybody. Leap Collection, we are finishing up the third final pass, which we thought would be done by now, but the snow threw us off a bit. But we expect to finish that early next week, and street sweepers will will go out as long as they can, obviously with the weather, something like today, and it can't really function. But we have had warmer weather, so we'll get them out there and and get the the Leap Collection finished up. In addition, just a reminder, tax collection, February 1st is the date. You can, again, you have the opportunity to pay online through our system for many years now, which you can be encouraged to do. Also, pay at the Dropbox outside Town Hall, which has been a very popular, probably our most popular addition since the pandemic started. You can still use that. That's collected every day. And or the Dropbox at the police station, if you feel more comfortable with that, that's also collected regularly. And and we are open, of course, the building is open, it's mask requirement. But we are open, we encourage you not to, if they don't commit, you don't have to come in, don't come in. But you are more than happy to come in and see Henry and his staff to pay your taxes. Or remind you again, of course, next meeting. Also, just on road paving, it was just mentioned earlier in the earlier meeting, we are those with town gas, actually with the mild wind we've had, except for the past week, they've been a little jumpstart on our 2022 gas main replacement areas. So they are currently working on the grid of Archibald Place, Arlington Avenue, a section of East Broad Street, Lenox, South Chestnut, South Euclid, St. Mark's, St. Paul's, Stanley, and Tremont. So that's one of a few grids this year. They'll be working on, the good news for us, they've already started that work, which means that might be able to speed up the ultimate repaving that that they will be doing at their costs and their expense sometime spring, summer of this year. In addition to doing the carryover roads, we actually carry over from 2021 and any other grids they do. So more to come on road paving in the coming months with the Finance Committee, but another very aggressive year of road paving coming up for 2022. And lastly, I know Councilman Hapgood will mention, but we have our budget process has begun. So and it never really ends, but the formal 2022 process comes up, we have our public budget meeting on January 27 via Zoom. I'll let Councilman Hapgood talk more about that in her report a little later. So that's all I have there. Unless there's any questions. You're on mute, Mayor.
I haven't heard that in a while.
I know. Famous, famous phrase of 2022 and or 2021 and 20, yeah.
I thought we were done with that. So good evening, everyone, and thanks to all of you who are joining us online tonight for the first regular meeting of the Town Council this year. While we certainly hope to keep our meetings in person, we, like many nearby municipalities, are temporarily pivoting back to Zoom as we ride out the current COVID surge driven by Omicron. So I'm hopeful that this is a short-term change. We're going to evaluate it week by week and that we are in the council chambers sooner rather than later. But since it has been a while, I want to remind everyone that in this in this format, public comment will be accepted only via Zoom, and we're live streaming for viewing only on Facebook. So if you want to make a comment, please log on to the Zoom link. And as always, the replay is available afterwards on Facebook, YouTube, and TV36. And just a brief note on COVID, I'll have my full update on Friday. But you know that seeing that COVID cases continue to climb as a result of the Omicron variant, and current models suggest 20,000 to 30,000 daily cases for the duration of January and about 8,000 hospitalizations by early February. Last night's Board of Health meeting, Regional Health Officer Megal Avalon, she did report that Westfield has seen 428 cases just since the beginning of January. And keep in mind, that doesn't include home tests and many, many positives that aren't reported. So it's actually very underrepresentation of probably what's really happening. So we've already had 428 reported, and there are, and that follows 11, over 1,100 that we had in December. So again, Friday, we'll have full cases and to report. And today, Governor Murphy announced that he has declared another public health emergency to keep measures in place to help curb the spread. I just do want to continue to thank all of our residents for what we've done in terms of vaccination rates. And just I've noticed there's a lot more mask wearing. Thank you, our businesses, thank you. So please keep it up, and hopefully we'll be on the other side of this curve in the in the next few weeks. So thank you all. And that is COVID is impacting Martin Luther King Jr. Day plans that are scheduled for this weekend. The Dr. MLK Jr. Association of Westfield does invite the community to join an outdoor commemoration of Dr. King on Monday at 1:00. It's going to be in the bandstand at Menduaskin. They canceled their normal commemorative service inside, but they are going to have a short outdoor event to commemorate the day and Dr. King's legacy of racial, social, and economic justice. They're also continuing their long tradition of marching to the annual service from the MLK Monument on the South Avenue Circle. They're going to be leaving there about 12:30 to march to Menduaskin Park, and everyone is welcome. And later in early February, they are hosting, in partnership with the Human Relations Advisory Commission, a community discussion entitled Disrupt Hate: Working Towards an Inclusive Westfield. It will be held on February 3 at Westfield High School. It's a panel discussion. I know Chief Adalora is on it, many members of the school district and others in the MLK Association. And so I would please encourage everybody to come and register. It's free and they'll have options to both attend in person or virtually, whatever anyone is most comfortable with. So and we'll be sending out more details about the links and so forth. Some great news in light of a lot of not great news. As you may recall, that last year, Lambert's Mill Academy, or I guess it wasn't last year, it was in the fall. It was last year, Lambert's Mill Academy and Hillside Academy South, both of which were on Lambert's Mill Road, were flooded out during IVA. Ida, and so we were thrilled to be able to help them facilitate the temporary use of the Lord &amp; Taylor property to become a school. And the good news is the school actually opened, and it went to its session at Lord &amp; Taylor this past, on January 3. And they're there, and they will be here through June. And I really want to thank Street Works Development, who really worked really hard in partnership with Union County to really make this happen. And so we're going to give the community a virtual walkthrough of what they've been able to do up on the second floor of the Lord &amp; Taylor. So join us on Facebook Live this Friday at 3:00. Now, we're going to be walking through the school's use of the building. And what's really cool is that we had a local artist, Sam Mooney, who actually did one of the murals under the Central Avenue Underpass. She created these amazing murals that are there to brighten up the school, if you will. And those murals will actually be able to be relocated to the school once it's open. So it's a really incredible public-private partnership, and I'm really proud of that and very more really thrilled for the students. And we, I think we all wish them a wonderful return to the school and hopefully somewhat normal school year for the remainder of the year. Tonight, we actually don't have a lot of legislative stuff, but we do have some really great things that we're 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 working on tonight. Most notably, there's a resolution supporting some community solar projects, which the Green Team covered at our 7:00 conference session. And very importantly, and very excitedly, we have resolutions referring three more properties to the Planning Board for historic designation. And as I've discussed many times, I think you've heard it from this administration many times, voluntary historic designation is one of our top priorities. I want to thank Historic Preservation Commission for their ongoing dedication and proactivity on this cause as they work with property owners to help us preserve these treasured properties of Westfield's past. So tonight, with their recommendation, we're voting on the next steps to designate two private properties, 23 Stonely Park and 112 Ferris Place, as well as the historic coffee kiosk owned by the town at the South Avenue Train Station. So I'd like Councilwoman Hapgood, as her last act as Historic Preservation Commission Council Liaison before transitioning at the Council on McGrippo, to share some of the incredible details of the reports about these properties, which can also be found full on our website, and it's fascinating reading. So she's going to give a little bit of tidbit, but I would encourage everybody to to look and read the whole thing, because it's quite great history. So Councilwoman Hapgood, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and I agree with you. I really enjoy going back and reading the reports today that were put together by our Historic Preservation Officer. And I'll give you just a little bit more information about the three properties that are being referred, hopefully tonight, with a vote back to the Planning Board for designation. So the Historic Preservation Commission's report indicates that the train station kiosk dates back to 1893 and is one of the last remaining exterior newsstands in the country and may be the oldest. There are a number, there are a handful of newspaper kiosks left in the country, but most of them have been moved inside. So we're very proud of the preservation that's happened on the building. If you haven't had a chance to go by the train station and look at the exterior of the building, it turned out beautifully and has been restored, restored to historic, the colors. And on Tuesday, January 18, this coming Tuesday, there will be a ribbon cutting because Boxcar is going to be open, reopening it as a coffee kiosk and a purveyor of different foods as they continue their operations. They'll be offering more and more things. Interestingly, and you'll see if you look at this online, it, the building originally stood on the north side of the train station, of the train line, and it was moved to the south side in the 1980s. So go by and take a look and and definitely pay a visit to the business that is going to be taking up residence there. 23 Stonely Park is the second property that we're going to be voting in via resolution tonight. That property is known as the Jed Smith Foster House. It was built in 1905, and it's an example of the first period of colonial revival. And Stonely Park is a planned residential development and was known for its park-like features. So all the properties are fairly large. Today, the property is owned by Robert and Anastasia Harrison, who asked the Historic Preservation Commission to examine the home's history for potential designation. And I'd really like to thank them for taking this step to ensure that this exquisite home is preserved for future generations to admire. I'm virtually certain that this is the first historically designated home that we'll have in Stonely Park, and we hope there will be more to come. And then the last of the three is the home at 112 Ferris Place, which is considered a pre-revolutionary homestead known as the Mills Ferris Pierceall House. The original portion of the property was built circa 1750, and it's one of the oldest houses in Westfield. It was built by one of the earliest settler families in the state and has been included in every town survey of important buildings. Currently owned by James Ward, he has committed to designate the Mills Ferris Pierceall House as part of his plans to redevelop the corner of Prospect and Ferris Place. And by doing so, will ensure the preservation of this important Westfield residence. The Planning Board, who will meet later this month, will take up their final vote to designate these properties. And this will bring, with the addition of these three, this administration will have nine properties that have been designated, all voluntary. And we're very happy to report all of the historic preservation that's going on in town. Because in addition to these properties, we've worked very closely to add historically appropriate outbuildings on properties that have already been designated historic and just worked very hard to preserve a lot of homes in town. So please take a look at the reports online, and thanks for taking a couple of minutes to learn a little bit more about the the properties that we're designating tonight.
Thanks, Councilwoman. I have to say, one of my better memories on Zoom is when we all put up those backgrounds last year.
I know.
That was, that was fun. So anyway, thanks. And that is, it's a really very exciting. So appreciate that background. So with that, let's get to work and move on to the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the Town Council Conference and regular meetings of December 7, 2021, and the organization meeting of January 4, 2022?
Move.
So move second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? This motion is carried. Now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Please virtually raise your hand to make your comment on any subject on which we have jurisdiction, and be sure to state your name and address for the record.
Hey, anyone want to speak? Feel free to raise your hand. We'll call upon you. Or raise your hand at once. Anyone like to speak? Again, first you raise your hand, we'll call upon you, and you can speak to the council, name and address. Looks like nobody's interested in speaking tonight, Mayor.
Okay, I'm hearing none.
Hold on, yeah, we have one, hold on. B, can you hear us?
Yes.
Name and address.
My name is Bea Lodge Duck, and I'm not sure if this is the voice for the public, for the residents right now, or should I wait a little bit?
No, this is the time.
Okay, the address is 517 First Street in Westfield.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm actually taking my time and introducing myself, because I am a resident who lives across the McKinley School. And in the fall, the McKinley School established a huge HVAC system, which you may be aware of, which is really disrupts the residents' life. And I wanted the board to be aware of it, and because I'm really upset what was done, meaning that this unit is going on. And I'm not so sure, but if you allow me, I will present you with the sound. This is, for example, taken at night.
Still there?
And that's going on every day between 7:00 and 6:00, but sometimes like last night, it's also on. So I don't know how you feel about that. This is from last night. And of course, it's not in front of your houses or your properties. But I would like to ask the board what, why was it placed in front of residential houses? And what are you going to do about it? I understand, because I received the message via email, that some kind of sound barrier is going to be established. But the time goes on. This unit was established in the fall of 2021. Today, it's January 11. Except for a few bushes that actually improved the look of this monstrous structure, the sound is still going on and is very destructive. So I, as a resident, I'm very, very upset about that, and I would like to have an explanation. Why was this done in front of my house?
Okay. Thanks for your comments. We'll be able to respond after the public portion is over. We have another speaker here. Chiara, Chiara, I think, I mean, is that how you pronounce it? Chiara Galbroussa? Are you there? Chiara.
Yeah, hi.
Name and address.
Yeah, my name, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. So my name is Chiara Galbroussa, and I'm actually a neighborhood of Miss P. I'm on 515 First Street. I'm in a health situation. I have my kids just finishing McKinley, so I reached out initially after the installation of the unit was a complete, semi-completed to Mr. Buono and ask, that is the principal of the school, and ask exactly why the decision of installing such a big unit was taken, and actually who decided to install it in that particular position, right? And of course, I mean, I'm sure there was planning, there has been a decision that they, you know, discussion that have taken place and decision had been made. Unfortunately, you know, like we are not a school like, you know, Tamacque's or you know, even Jefferson, that they have a very, very big and broad park all around the school. So effectively, the houses are very, very far from the school itself, right? So we are, the school is part of, it's almost like an addition of another big house, right? So their yard is basically concomitant with all of us. And so this unit that is monstrous. And I don't know why it was installed, for which reason, because again, I had my kids going to McKinley. We did the mini-ton, we danced like crazy in that gym, and none of us really felt that we needed to have so much extra air conditioning for summer or now like a such a big heating system. I'm sure part of it is due to the fact that of COVID and the filtration system of the areas and so on. But I, you know, I wish you would come to our neighborhood during Saturday and Sunday and during the holidays or even in summer when they start to install. And actually, in summer, it was mostly late fall, but because they have so many runs, mock runs to see how the system was working, we could really experience what it will be, the sound that we will have during the upcoming summer. You know, if you have, if you are in the yard, you can feel almost the vibration on the ground. And you know, like the sound is really intense and so on. And this was a Saturday and Sunday, so we at least in summer, it will be turned off, and that was, we were assured with Miss P that that was going to happen, right? That this unit will just work during school time, and so be basically ended by 7:00, I think PM, and early start at 7:00 AM, and that is done. While instead, we see running, of course, in days like, you know, holidays and during during the holidays, it was actually working, because I think some of the people are working inside the school, right? So I'm expecting in summer will be exactly the same. And again, during office time and during time of the day in which we have so many other noises, you come in, you know, it melts within, you know, the very nice noise that we used to hear of the screaming kids and so on, right? While instead, when the sounds goes down in the evening and during the holidays and so on, it's really the only things we can hear. So I don't know, like Miss P and I are the more most vocal. We didn't really want to start collecting signature. If this is what it takes, we will do that. But I really encourage you to pass by in one of these days in which there is not so much noise. How disturbing is, you know, for our houses and for our weekends. We all work very hard. We're constantly connected in some way, and it will be nice to sit outside into our mini yard that we have around here and just hear, just, you know, the birds and the squirrels. So that's my contribution.
Great, thank you very much. Great, thank you very much. Before we have, anyone else like to be heard? Feel free to raise your hand. Virtually. Going once. Going twice. We, people usually speak one time at the microphone. Biata, so anyone else like to be heard? Okay. Mayor?
Okay, I close this portion of the meeting. So Jim, do you want to address? I know that it's a school issue, and I know that when Miss P originally reached out to me, I can't remember if you were on those emails or not. I put her in touch with Dana Sullivan, and that, and I know, I think I copied the word for councilpersons, Katz and Mackey. And I know that they, the principal, was it Mr. Buono, and Dana have been in touch with the homeowners. I'm just not sure what your, what our jurisdiction is on the school issue. Maybe you can comment on that.
Yeah, I was on some of those emails, Mayor, and it is not our jurisdiction per se, but we can you know, I can, I can reach out to Dana and see where things are. I'm hoping that the Business Administrator Dana Sullivan and the principal have reached out to Mrs. Biata and the other woman who spoke tonight. But we can follow up with that and make sure that the communication is happening. But as yet, it's not Town Council jurisdiction. This is a school board property. And they have certain rights to add equipment on their property, but of course, want to make sure it's done properly, et cetera. So I'll follow up with Dana and have them reach out and, you know, insert myself as necessary.
So so Jim, for these homeowners, what would you, what is their best recourse to go back to just? I will obviously weigh in with Dana, but should they circle back with Board of Ed? Or I just want to make sure that they have someone that will be responsive to them.
Yeah, they definitely should circle back with Dana Sullivan. I don't know, Tom, I mean, this is also something that would be, they don't need, I don't believe they need jurisdiction from local planning or zoning boards as a right installation, I believe, if I have that right.
Yeah, no, you have it right. You know, the mayor and council can certainly help facilitate meetings with the school board and the business administrator, but it's not within our jurisdiction. We have no responsibility or ability to affect it in any formal way.
So to just to close out, we'll bring it up with the school district officials again. And we would ask you to reach out potentially to, back to the superintendent or to Dana Sullivan again, and see if they can come up with some more satisfactory solutions for you.
And I'll reach out to Dana tomorrow based upon tonight's input.
Great, thank you. Okay, so let's move on to bills and claims. Councilwoman Hapgood?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move bills and claims in the amount of $506,269.03.
May I have a second? Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? This motion is carried. Next on the agenda is reports to standing committees, beginning with the Finance Policy Committee. Councilwoman Hapgood?
Thank you again, Mayor. I have six resolutions that I'd like to move as a package. But before I get to those, I just wanted to add a couple of more details about the annual budget review meeting that will happen on January 27. This is Thursday evening at 7:00 PM. The Zoom link will be posted on the website. I'm sorry that we can't do it in person. But just for anyone listening, and for the record, this is a meeting that we started four years ago as a way to report back to the community on how we performed against the budget. In the past, it had always been a presentation of the budget when it was finalized, but no circling back to let everyone know how we had done against the budget and also give the community a chance to, you know, let us know as a Finance Policy Committee and as a Town Council, the things that are important for them and things that they might want us to consider. the things that are important for them and things that they might want us to consider in the budgeting process for 2022. So I encourage you to come to the meeting, and I also encourage you to reach out to me or any of the other Finance Policy Committee members with any thoughts or concerns that you have about the budget for this year, because we, as Jim mentioned, are about to kick off that process in days. So it's a very exciting time of the year for all of us with a, with a finance bent. So back to the resolutions. The first resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrant to treasurer of State of New Jersey for marriage civil union license fees. A resolution authorizing the CFO to refund dumpster security payment. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for overpaid taxes due to veteran and senior citizen deductions for 2021. A resolution authorizing the CFO to draw warrants for overpaid taxes for 2021. A resolution authorizing the town attorney and tax assessor to file counterclaims, appeals, and cross appeals and statutory tax appeals. And finally, a resolution authorizing the town of Westfield's participation in and funding for fiscal year 2023 municipal alliance program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So my councilman, Darty, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next is Code Review and Town Property Committee. Councilman Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four resolutions that I'd like to move in as a package. First one's a resolution authorizing participation in the nationwide settlements in connection with the ongoing opioid crisis. Second, third, and fourth are what Councilwoman Hapgood referred to earlier. Resolution referring the report and recommendation to the Planning Board for the historic designation of the coffee kiosk at the South Avenue Train Station. The resolution referring the report and recommendation to the Planning Board for historic designation of 23 Stonely Park. And the last is the resolution referring the report and recommendations to the Planning Board for historic designation of 112 Ferris Place.
May I have a second?
Second.
So my council, Griffo, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? This motion has carried. And last is the Public Works Committee. Councilman Contract.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two resolutions to move as a package. The first is a resolution supporting community solar projects. Provide a little bit more detail afterwards. And, and the second is a resolution awarding contract for grinding of brush material. Just for folks who weren't on the 7 o'clock meeting, we are, we are endorsing residents' participation in community solar projects. It's a New Jersey state program to bring residents who can't put solar on their property or who rent to bring them the benefits of solar, which is saving money. So if you join the program, you can save 20% on your electricity supply. If you qualify as low and moderate income, you can save 25%. It's a real win-win for you and for the environment. For every resident who signs up, the town gets a small incentive, which we can put towards another sustainability project. And I believe you'll get a hundred dollar Visa credit, Visa gift card as well. So I'm sure the town will, if this passes, provide more details on how to sign up. But it's a really, it's a really smart thing to do, and I plan to do it. So thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like we just had it. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose? This motion has carried. Okay, that was a pretty speedy first meeting on Zoom, so may I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
So move.
Move, my councilman Hapgood, second?
Second.
Second, my councilman, Darty, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and good night, everybody.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Good night.